Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the first meeting for 2011 for the Henry County Board of Commissioners. The date is January the 4th at 9:00 a.m. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I would like to welcome our two new board members. To my extreme right, we have our incoming District 2 Commissioner, Mr. Fred Auletta, and then to his left, we have Mr. Bruce Holmes, who represents the 5th district. And gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you on behalf of the board, and we certainly look forward to working with you going forward. With that being said, I'd like to ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Please approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we are going to have a presentation by our Tax Commissioner, Mr. David Curry. Mr. Curry, if you'd like to come forward.
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning. Appreciate you allowing me the opportunity this morning to share with you some of the good things that's been going on at the Tax Commissioner's office the last two years. The first two years of being Tax Commissioner in Henry County has certainly faced a lot of challenges. I read your headline in the paper last Thursday, and you said 2010 had its own challenges, Madam Chair, and I think 2010 just kind of rolled over 2009 because when I took office to begin with, we were faced with a very challenging economic times in Henry County, probably the most so in my lifetime. But we have still done some good things. We faced those challenges head-on, and I want to share some of those this morning with you. Some of the points of interest that we're going to go over this morning are the improvements to the office, the taxes that's been levied, tax collections for delinquent taxes, penalties and interest, business license, motor vehicles, and our plans for the future. To begin with, Mr. Pipkin, the other old Tax Commissioner, allowed me to come into the office and study under him a little while before taking the helm. And some of the things that I saw, I just wanted to put my personal touch on, other things I felt like needed to be changed immediately. I noticed we were getting a lot of phone calls about property tax bills. People had questions about home state exemptions. So we changed the website to show a property tax bill that when the citizen gets on there, they can scroll their pointer across a particular line item or window, and they can click on it. It'll tell them what their home state exemption is, what the qualifications are, and if they're getting it or not. Something else we did, we put a survey on the website, and that was to improve the service to the citizens. It's a very simple survey. I got the idea from the Chick-fil-A right down the road here, that you take their survey, six or seven questions, they tell you if you're... Our survey tells you, asks you if you're satisfied, everything from cleanliness to customer satisfaction, where your issue's taken care of. We've been able to get a lot of feedback from that survey. Another thing we did, we had Brink's armored service come in. In the old days, we took our deposits similar to the way a convenience store does, and I don't want to get too involved in this topic here, but we negotiated a bank contract with SunTrust. Part of that contract was they were to provide armored service for our deposits. This helped for our safety issues as well as production time. In the past, we had a high-level manager taking those deposits to the bank. By the time you take those deposits to the bank, sit with the teller, come back, you're losing about an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes of production time. That manager could be at the office. Now Brink's comes in, takes those deposits for us, and we're not losing that production in the office. Security cameras. We added security cameras because about the middle of '09, we had an issue take place in the office, and went back to look at it on our cameras, we realized our cameras did not do the job. We couldn't tell what was being said, we couldn't really tell much about the person involved. So after talking to Mike Bush, we agreed that an update to the security system would be needed. We added hours of service. When I took office, I found myself working late, and a lot of times, people would come up to the door. When I go around and ask them, eventually, I got to where I was asking them, "Did you look on the website for the hours?" Yes, we did. Your hour states you're open until 6:00. Well, the Stockbridge hours were until 6:00. And I got to asking the leadership team and asking questions. Most people come to the office one time a year. They didn't need to guess when we were going to be open. So we changed our hours of operation on Monday and Thursday till 6:30 in the evening, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, which stay open until 5:00. We're both the same, open the same amount of hours, same days. It's a lot easier for the public. We lost a good employee in the Stockbridge office. She moved on to bigger and better things. We had an opening there. I hired a fluent bilingual person. The North Henry area deals a lot more with Hispanic population, and we felt there was a need for a bilingual person there, so we hired a young lady to do that. We began to bill and collect for Stockbridge sanitation. Stockbridge approached me around the March of 2009. Their collection rate was about 62 percent. Asked me if I would be interested in collecting it. After checking with the Department of Revenue and some legal advice, we found out we could collect it for them. Their first year of collections was 95 percent. That's a dramatic increase from their 62 percent. I think they're well pleased with their results. We began to institute weekly staff meetings, and that was to communicate between departments. Business license office and property tax have a lot of things in common, and we needed to be able to discuss issues before they became issues for the citizens. We also implemented digest meetings between the school board, the county commissioners. Mike Bush has been a part of that, Finance Department, Accessorials Office, Tax Commissioner's Office. This begins in January. This was very important in 2009 because we were looking at a negative digest in '09, certainly in 2010 as well. And we were able to share information early on, so it wasn't such a big surprise in June. We were able to prepare for that early. This slide here, it's a little hard to read on the bottom, but these are taxes levied and collected for fiscal year 2006 through 2009. If you'll notice, in 2006, we levied $189 million in taxes. We collected 183 of that 189 for the fiscal year of '06. That gave us a collection rate of 96.5 percent. The graph increases to 208 million in '07, to 225 in '08, to finally 230 million in 2009. These are fiscal year collections. The important thing here is to show that in '07 and '08, our collection rate was 94 percent and 93 percent. In 2009, we had more economic challenges here in Henry County. However, our fiscal year collection rate was the greatest it'd been in three years, at 95 percent. There again, that's fiscal year. If you look to the right, you'll see year-to-date collections for '06 is 99 percent, '07, '08, and 2009 is 97 percent. We expect that to be 99 percent later this year. This chart here, collection for delinquent taxes for prior years. This chart and the next chart I'm going to show you are identical, except for the fact I'm going to add one year to the second chart. Prior years is 1990-2007. The reason 2008 is not on this chart, because of January 1, 2009, we're dealing with the '08 taxes. The '08 taxes were only due six weeks prior. So January 1 of 2009, our current year taxes is 2008. Prior years, January 1, 2009, when I came into office, we had $7.1 million in delinquent taxes. In one year's time, we reduced that 51 percent. We collected $3.6 million of that delinquent taxes and left a balance of $3.5 million. We collected, I'm going to say that again, 51 percent of our delinquent taxes in one year. The next chart shows a $10.1 million in January 1 of 2010. We continued our efforts and reduced that amount 79 percent to roll over a balance for this year of $2.1 million in delinquent taxes. First year taking office, we reduced delinquent taxes 51 percent, to second year, 79 percent. Our personal property tax. This is the ugly little stepchild in every Tax Commissioner's office nobody wants to deal with. It's very difficult to deal with personal property, with real estate, real property. You have something substantial, tangible, you can go get if you have to. Personal property tax, it's very easy to lose track of it, where it's at. January 1, 2009, we had $4 million in delinquent personal property tax. The first year, we reduced that down to $2.3 million. Now we have $1.5 million in delinquent personal property tax. We've decreased this amount roughly 67 percent. Penalties and interest. This is a slide that's caused a little bit of interest, no pun intended, over the last couple of weeks. February 2, 2009, y'all granted me the opportunity, or the responsibility, to waive penalties and interest where I saw fit. And I didn't take that responsibility lightly, and I hope this slide shows that. Commissioner Bowman, you asked me a question that day, how I would decide who and who would not receive the penalty waiver. And to be honest, that wasn't an easy question to answer then, it's not even easier today. We look at each individual basis on a case-by-case basis. We have collected $3 million in penalties over the last two years. We have collected $4.3 million in interest, cumulating a total of $7.3 million in penalties and interest. We have waived 1.3, and there's a lot of reasons you have to waive. Legally, you have to waive the penalty. However, also in that number is some decisions made on my behalf to waive penalty. A third of that number, 1.3 million, is FDI. The FDIC will not pay the penalty, and they'll only pay interest if you FDA'd the property. So that number may seem large, but majority of that number is legally, you cannot charge a penalty. Occupational Tax Office, new license issued. In 2008, we had 1,208 new licenses issued. As you can see, a steady decline. '09, there was 986. 2010, 908. A decrease of about 300 business licenses over the last two years. We did mail out a little over 5,300 new business license, renewal business license, the last quarter of 2010, and we started getting that revenue back in, and that's about a million-dollar revenue producer for the county. Motor vehicles. This slide here kind of represents where we're at in the economic times of Henry County. 2006, we had 180,000 tags that were sold, generated $18.2 million in revenue. 2007, it went to 186,000. We've maintained 186,000 motor vehicle tags over the last four years. However, you'll look at the revenue produced off that at the bottom of the screen. 2007, we produced $19.6 million revenue. 2008, it peaked out at 20.6. 2009, we actually sold more tags, but we generated 2.2 less in revenue, 2.2 million less in revenue. In 2010, the lowest amount of revenue for all five years, 17.5. I think this represents, people are not buying new vehicles, but are hanging on to the old vehicles and repairing them. What are our plans for the future? We want participation from the public. We have a website survey. We ask for feedback. We have in-office suggestion boxes. We've even got a Facebook. We're asking people to friend us, or like us, or whatever the terminology is. I'm not a big Facebook guy, but I am when it comes to Tax Commissioner's Office. We're asking people to get on there and become a fan. We're using this for updates. 2009, the General Assembly did away with the HTRG, and every newspaper print and commercial I saw on TV, or news reporter, said we were doing away with a home state exemption. A home state exemption didn't have anything to do with HTRG, but they tied it to it. We're still answering questions on the phone, "When am I going to get my home state exemption back?" We hope to use Facebook to educate the public. And last year, there was a $35 increase on special tags. It was supposed to be a one-time fee that you paid $35 for that tag. Last year, they signed a law in May stating that every time you renew that tag, it's an extra $35. It's caught a lot of people by surprise. Again, we hope to use Facebook to publish the news, and as laws change, use that as an avenue to get that information out there. We want to continue to educate the public. Later this month, I'm doing a town hall meeting at a homeowner association meeting, describing the rights and responsibilities as taxpayers. As taxpayers, they have responsibilities. They have rights as well, but they also have responsibilities as well. We want to make sure they're getting their home state exemption. We want to make sure they're getting every exemption they qualify for. I'm going to develop an advisory board. I've already asked a couple of gentlemen to sit on this board. This is to get outside influence. Sometimes when you're inside the fishbowl, you can't see what's going on around you. I want some outside influence, some community leaders, business leaders, that can help us improve the customer service of our office. Also, last week, we applied for the Georgia Focus Recognition Award. This is the first step of the Georgia Oglethorpe Award process. If you're not familiar with it, it's also based off the Malcolm Baldrige Award process. Malcolm Baldrige is the national criteria. The Georgia Oglethorpe is a statewide criteria. There are 38 states that use the Malcolm Baldrige criteria for their own in-state award process. And while the award is nice, it's the proof that you're doing things right is what matters. The award will be nice to put on a shelf, but I want to know that we're doing everything we can to provide excellent customer service, and doing everything we can to be perfect. We may never be perfect. Doesn't mean we can't strive to be perfect. Something else, we were awarded about 60 days ago, and a lady came in office, and I guess when you've got your nose stuck to the grinding wheel, you don't see the results behind you. We have the best collection rate we've had in 15 years on delinquent and personal property tax. The reason 2010's not there, we're still collecting 2010. For '09, we have a 96.5 percent collection rate on personal property, by far the best we've had in several years. 98.78 for mobile homes and 97.22 for real property. In summary, we've made several improvements to increase efficiency and effectiveness of overall advancement of the Tax Commissioner's Office. We've had the best collection rate fiscal year collections in three years. We've reduced delinquent property tax 51 percent for '09 and 79 percent for 2010. We reduced delinquent personal property tax by 62 percent from January 1 of 2009. We collected $7.3 million in penalties and interest on delinquent taxes. While the motor vehicle revenue has decreased, the number of tags have remained consistent over the last four years. We have great plans for the future to improve the overall service and efficiency of that office, and we have the best collection rate in 15 years. And I welcome your questions.
Before I ask the board members if they have any questions, I personally want to say thank you, David, because I had an opportunity to sit in some of the meetings a couple of years ago, when we were anticipating the drop in the property values, and the communication was absolutely critical in helping the county to set our budget and know what our goals were going to be several months ahead of time, so we could start making plans for that. And I know I can pick up the phone and call you anytime, and I have to say how much I appreciate the relationship between the Board of Commissioners and your office. And you're always accessible, and I think I've even talked to you on the weekends, and I really appreciate that, because as constitutional officers, certainly are under no obligation to really work with the Board of Commissioners, but I do appreciate your willingness to do that.
Thank you.
Does any board member have a question or a comment for David? Mr. Holder?
First of all, I'd like to echo what the Chairman said. Many times, constitutionals are difficult to work with, and we had this conversation last week, when the sheriff and others were involved in a meeting. And we're very fortunate in Henry County to have constitutionals that we can work with, and that... I know we have two new commissioners here this morning that I promised you in orientation, they were told that the first, the worst thing that you were going to have, the biggest challenge to being a commissioner, was dealing with constitutional offices. Am I right or wrong? That's just, it's everywhere. But we just, we just need to be thankful that we have people that are willing to work. Couple of questions. In any time you see numbers like the Tax Commissioner has put up, you're going to have people that are going to complain about the way things are done because it's really hitting them. In fact, I can speak for myself, and I think other commissioners probably have had this, and I know David is familiar with what I'm going to say. You have constituents that bring the commissioner in to try to run interference with the Tax Commissioner if they're being levied. Only thing I can say is David has been extremely fair, and his job is to collect the taxes by the law. And he has been extremely fair, and again, people don't always agree, and you're going to have a lot of criticism because you're taking money from their pocket, which belongs to taxes. Two questions that I have. Correct me if I'm wrong, David, but in, you said in 2010, there were 908 new licenses issued. Is that not correct?
I believe that's correct. Let me flip over to my hard copy here. In 2008, there were 1,208...
No, no, 2010.
2010, 908.
908.
That's new business license for unincorporated Henry County.
That's my point that I'm making. In down times, for us to have 900 new businesses to have license speaks fairly well. I think we've done extremely well. And another thing, and I want you to explain for each of our benefits here. This law on special tags, I know I've been hit with it several times, and I'm sure other people have too, from constituents. That is not a law that the Board of Commissioners passed to put this additional fee or to have it recurring.
Or is it the Tax Commissioner's...
Explain it, that that is a legislative act.
There is a lot of things that happen at the General Assembly the first 40 days of the year that we have to deal with. There are mandates, I'm sure you're all familiar with, that you have to do, that you don't get funding for. There's also law changes. And no one called Henry County to ask if this was a good deal for Henry County. It doesn't matter if I agree with it or disagree with it. But when the governor signs it in the law, we have to enforce it. And granted, when that person bought that specialty tag for $35 and told it was a first-time fee, a one-time fee, it should have been a one-time fee. And looking back, I can be an armchair quarterback, just like anybody else can, and I can decide, make suggestions how they should have done things different. But the bottom line is, they didn't ask me. They signed a bill in the law that from now on, if you have a special tag, it's $35 every year you want to renew it. With that said, I can tell you that I've had a lot of special tags turned back in. I'm sure the thought process behind this was, the state of Georgia was looking for other ways to generate revenue to offset some of their spending. And they thought this might be somewhere to get some of their revenue. But I've had a lot of people turn those tags in. They're strapped with cash. Typically, if one person in the family has a specialty tag, two people do, the husband and wife. They're not ready to pay an extra $70 when they renew their tags. I don't, I can't tell the state where they should have looked to get that revenue. However, I don't know that this was the best place to look for it.
That's all I have.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Well, David, thank you so much for taking time to come in and bring us up to date on all this. It was very informative, and thank you for the great job you're doing as our Tax Commissioner.
Thank you. And to reiterate what you said, my door is always open. If any of you ever have any questions, don't hesitate to come down and see me, don't hesitate to call. And like Madam Chair said, I'm certainly available on Saturday and Sunday as well. If you have a question that's important to you, it's important to me, and just give me a call.
Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, at this time, we need to appoint a vice chairman for the board, and I will look to Mr. Stamey for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Mr. Holder.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 5-4-0. At this time, we need to appoint the county clerk for 2011, and I think Mr. Stamey may have a few comments to make on that.
I'm going to reserve them. No, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Shay Matthews.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. He likes to, for those of you who are watching and wondering about that, he likes to aggravate our clerk at every...
I think she likes to aggravate us.
Yeah, that would probably be a fair statement. All right, this time, we're going to move on to our board and authority appointments. The first is going to be the Henry County Development Authority, and you have a resolution before you. And Mr. Bowman, who is your appointment for this board?
My appointee for the Development Authority is Bill Herndon.
Okay, we have Bill Herndon, and District 5?
My appointee is Charles Smith.
All right, and who would like to make that in the form of a motion? Would you like to make that in the form of a motion? Have a motion by Mr. Bowman and a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The next appointments are going to be the Henry County Recreation Board, and we have District 4.
Madam Chair, I'm going to defer. I have not had an opportunity to talk to my current members.
All right, and District 5?
Madam Chair, my appointment is Delander H. Nelson.
All right, we have a motion for Delander H. Nelson for District 5 by Mr. Holmes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to the Henry County Library Board, I believe, Mr. Bowman, that you are also going to defer on this appointment, so, Mr. Holmes, I'll look to you for your, a motion for your appointee to the Library Board.
I'm making a motion for Cicely Bland.
Can we have a motion for Cicely Bland? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to the Henry County Zoning Advisory Board. On this one, under the chairman appointee, it's Jennifer Brown. Mr. Holder?
Lee Spahas.
Mr. Auletta?
Madam Chair, John Palmer.
Mr. Stamey?
Carrie Eccles.
Mr. Bowman?
Vicky McRudles.
Mr. Holmes?
Eldred C. Smeltz.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for those six individuals. Who would like to make that motion? Mr. Holmes makes that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Auletta. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to the Henry County Water and Storage Authority. District 1?
Hal Smith.
District 2?
Rick Jefferies.
District 3?
Mr. Jimmy Carter.
District 4?
Jim Lanahan.
And District 5?
Robert Abercrombie.
Do we have a motion to approve those five individuals?
Make a motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to the Henry County Council on Aging. Each district has three appointments. District 1?
Martha Lenny, Libicheanu, Davis, Barbara Price, Hazel Gardner.
District 2?
Reappoint Geraldine Tanner, Carolyn Floyd, and a new appointee is Ann Tartley.
District 3?
Madam Chair, I'm going to defer on my three.
District 4?
Madam Chair, I'm going to reappoint Ernestine Evans, Diane Tomlin, and Jim Howler.
And District 5?
Madam Chair, we have two appointments to date. Frances Colmore and Patricia Pritchett.
All right, we have a, I need a motion to approve those named individuals. Motion by Mr. Holmes? Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. And gentlemen, whenever you get ready to name those other appointees, if you'll let us know, we'll put those back on the agenda. Moving on to public safety, we have a resolution requesting authorization to use asset forfeiture and seized funds for educational training. Our presenter is Major Jason Bolton of the Police Department. It's going to be exhibit number one. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This request is pretty much identical to one that was made within the last few months, wherein we have one of our lieutenants who has applied and been accepted into the Command College program at Columbus State University. Command College offers a course of study that goes beyond what is currently available for today's law enforcement management personnel, and it is taught in 10 40-hour modules over the course of two years. Total cost for attending Command College is $12,700. This includes the tuition, the housing, and the meals, and the Police Department is requesting authorization to use the total of $12,700 from our seized drug funds in order to send our lieutenant to the Command College program.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
Jason, would this be the first female from Henry County that's attended Command College?
I do believe so, yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Mr. Stamey?
Jason, is this similar to the college that Major Matthews went to a couple of years ago?
It is the same college, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, once again, we always have to comment, and that these funds are, that are sending our officers for specialized training are courtesy of our local drug dealers, and we certainly like putting those to good use. At this time, you have a resolution before you. Mr. Bowman has made a motion to approve that. Mr. Stamey seconds. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Planning and zoning services, we have a resolution requesting approval of a fee schedule for the Building Department and discussion regarding accessory structures and recreational vehicles on RA lots. Our presenter is Bert Foster, Building Department Director, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. Before you this morning is a request to amend the Building Department's fee schedule to include bond amounts for move-in structures. This request originally appeared before you back in October of last year, but as a quick recap, move-in structure is defined as a pre-existing structure that is relocated from one place to another via an oversized carrier. When the ULDC was adopted in 2009, it outlined the procedures that we must follow in order to issue a permit. Part of those procedures include the collection of certain bonds. However, no specific amounts were associated with those bonds. If you don't mind turning to Exhibit B in your packet, you will see a couple of options that staff has prepared for you. I'll go over each one of those options very briefly, and we'll certainly explain them in more detail if necessary. Option one are the original bond amounts that Henry County collected prior to the adoption of the ULDC. Option two represents the bond amounts that are required for oversized motor carriers to have in order to get a GDOT permit to move these, in order to move these oversized structures. Staff is recommending a combination of both Option One and Option Two, as illustrated in Option Three. This will give us the greatest coverage and most surety to guarantee that these move-in structures are built to our codes and specifications. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
On the additional topics for discussion on our executive summary, you've brought up the subject of accessory structures and buildings. And that would include the portable sheds?
Yes, ma'am.
And also gazebos?
Yes, ma'am.
And what other structures would that include besides those two?
Things like playgrounds, the, any structure that is a, that is temporary in nature, per se, what I, what we're primarily going for, Commissioner Holder had asked us to look into this, involves those tool sheds that you can buy at the big box home improvement stores and put on your property. They're temporary in nature because they're not put on a permanent foundation. Currently, the ULDC requires you to pull a permit for any, any structure that exceeds a hundred and twenty square feet. A lot of these tool sheds do not, but some of them do. As we've investigated it, we're not so much interested in the building itself, per se, rather the location where the shed falls on the property. That's where the ULDC attempts to regulate these, these structures.
Would that be structure-specific, or would that be open for interpretation? For instance, you referenced that a playground?
Yes, ma'am.
Could possibly be considered an accessory structure? Would you name specifically in the ordinance those items, or, as I said, would it be open for interpretation?
Yes, ma'am, we could. One of the solutions that we found in addressing this question could be incorporating what's called a minor structure definition into the ULDC. We can incorporate all those various minor, dog houses, bird cages, things like that, people, just minor structures that can be placed on the property. All we're really interested in is where they're put on the, on the lot, because that's what the ULDC regulates. The building itself, because it's not habitable, is not really an interest to us, rather, we're more interested in where the project, where the, the structure falls on the lot.
To assure that they're not encroaching on property lines?
Yes, ma'am. Property lines, drainage easements, they've gotta be a certain distance away from the primary structure, and probably the most important thing is making sure they're not impacting their septic system by covering it up.
I'm a little concerned about the playground. I'm not, I'm not so sure that that should fall under a structure, but I guess that's for the Board to determine. Mr. Stamey, you have a question?
Yes, also in that same paragraph, Bert, it says people should be allowed to stay in recreation vehicles for a set amount of time. Should we plug in a date? I mean, some time, it's wide open, who sets the amount of time?
Yes, sir, that's, that's the other item for discussion. It's been brought to our attention that the way the ULDC reads right now, recreational vehicles are allowed to be stored on residential lots in the side or rear yard. They can even be placed anywhere on the lot for a period of twenty-four hours to allow for loading and unloading. However, at no time may anyone use those RVs as a living facility. For example, if you have relatives from out of town, they'd have to stay inside the house, they couldn't use the RV as a, as a dwelling for any amount of time. We wanted to bring that to the Board's attention to see if that was perhaps overly restrictive, if we wanted to, to set a certain time limit on how long these RVs could be used as a temporary dwelling, just, like I said, just bring it to the Board's attention for further discussion.
What I, I've actually had several calls concerning this particular one, where people live in rural areas, let's say they live on a fifty-acre farm, and they have a neighbor that comes in and stays for four days, they're not even allowed to spend the night in their own motor home, but that same person could pitch a tent and lived on their property. And, and they're containing their own water, the only thing they're supplying would probably be temporary power, in some cases, but not in all cases. So it would just be my suggestion, I don't know what the other Board members feel, I would like to cap that at seven, seven days.
Seven twenty-four hour periods.
Yes, seven days, no more than seven days.
Commissioners, there are a couple of other items to go along with that. The location of this RV, like I said, if you store an RV on your property, it has to be in the side or rear yard. However, there is a twenty-four hour grace period that allows you to park it anywhere on the property for the purposes of loading and unloading. If we do approach it as a seven-day dwelling period, is there a certain location on the lot that you'd like to have the?
I feel, I feel pretty comfortable, they're gonna locate it fairly close to the residential structure on the property, unless they're doing something in the very backside of the property. But I would say within so many feet of the, I mean, I'm gonna defer that to other Board members, but I think within several hundred feet of the actual residential property that they're visiting.
Okay. And the number of RVs that you'd like to see on a lot at any one time? Another thing for consider, and again, this is just for discussion and consideration, we can certainly.
We won't be, we won't be voting on this today.
No, ma'am.
Since it's not in the resolution, just for discussion purposes.
Just for discussion.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make that, stress that point. The only resolution you have, the Board has before them today, is in reference to the move-in house insurance requirements. The other two items, accessory structures and the RVs, we wanted to bring them to the Board for discussion purposes only. There are some provisions currently already in the, in the ordinance that addresses exactly where accessory structures can be located, side and rear yards only. So we just wanted to bring it up to the Board, to get some direction from the Board, if you'd like us to go back and let you know what the existing ordinance currently states, and certainly, Commissioner Stamey, take your recommendations into, into account, and come back before the Board with perhaps a modified text to address specifically accessory structures and RV, RV structures.
With that same thought, Bert, and you're not gonna require that gentleman who has a recreation vehicle to have any type of bond on his property too, are you?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, he will fall under the jurisdiction of code enforcement if they exceed whatever duration that the Board decides to place on it.
And under the present ordinance, does it require them to contain their own water?
No, I don't think it does. I don't think it addresses that right now.
It, it does not, and that's, that's one of the other things, if we're gonna allow them to install facilities for utility hookups, because that was also brought to our attention as a, as a potential request, someone is asking to allow for permanent hookups to be installed on these residential properties.
Still, they're permanent hookups, but we can still relegate them to a certain duration, if that's the Board's desire. You know, what I thought was to get some input from the Board this morning, come back and craft new language that addresses all the concerns that the Board may have.
Okay, we just wanted to make the Board aware of the requests that are coming to us, that the ordinance is silent on, or maybe a little excessive in dealing with.
One other thing I want to bring up, just as consideration among the Board members, we live in a tornado-plagued area. There may be a situation where a home is damaged, a structure is damaged and is under repair. Would we exclude people from occupying this, their recreational vehicle while the home is being repaired? So that's something we need to think about as well, because I've seen it before where they will live on-site during that time, and that will, that's where they stay, and it's a cost savings for them, and it allows them to be on-site to oversee the repair process.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with that, Bert, I just think it needs to be, the owner is the one who's occupying the recreation vehicle, the owner of the damaged property.
Mr. Holder?
Several questions. First of all, has this been an issue or a problem? I know it's like we got sidetracked from the first issue, and then we own these, but has it been an issue that brought this to the surface?
The, the RV question? Yet, one in particular. We had a request come in for, a gentleman would like to put upwards of three RVs on his RA lot at any one time, as part of a motocross tour that apparently comes through the area. He is asking for permission to allow the people, as their own tour, when they're, when they're in this area, and they're, they'll be here for a couple of days, to allow them to park their RVs and live out of their RVs for X number of days. And like I said, the ordinance specifically prohibits anyone from living out of an RV at this time.
I understand. Okay, if we cap it at seven days, ten days, whatever the case might be, how is that gonna be enforced? Somebody gonna have to call you and tell you, okay, we're putting an RV on our property today, so in seven days, you're gonna have to determine? It's gonna be very extremely hard to enforce. I think another thing that we've forgotten in this is the hardship side, and the Chairman touched on that briefly. There are many instances where hardship comes into play, and if we can't help our citizens, then we're not much of a Board of Commissioners. Because, think about it, the tornado comes through, blows a man's house down, or fire, or whatever. And he has a motor home, or he has access to a motor home, or else he is put out. We need to take these things into consideration to, to not try to keep someone away.
Yes, ma'am.
And let's take another for instance. I have no idea who made the application, and the who doesn't make any difference. But if a person had an RA-zoned piece of property, and he had fifty acres, and he had a motor home, a motor coach club, or whatever that came through, and wanted to stay for three days, five days, whatever, who is he hurting?
Yes.
Now, if he was in a RA subdivision, which we have some of those in existence, to where he's on a one-acre lot, and he wanted to put three or four motor homes on it, then that's a different issue. This is gonna require some deep study, before we just respond in, in having ordinance based on one application of someone wanting to do something. We really need to study this before we say, this is it. If we say seven days, we say ten, we say no, we say one motor home, we say three, we look at it carefully. Because when something like this is put into place, the impact can be far-reaching.
Yes, sir, and I, I do agree with you, and that was, the gentleman's request served to make us aware of just how restrictive the current ULDC is, as it, as it pertains to these RVs. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Do we want to discuss the recommendation of the changes for the bond letters and things like that, because that's what's in, that's what's contained in the resolution that we're considering today, the summary of the bond insurance options for move-in houses? Do we have any questions or comments on that? Mr. Holder?
And I know this varies from applicant to applicant, but roughly, what would be the cost of a bond that we would be requiring for the twenty-five, three-hundred-and-ten, and ten? Do you have any idea what the cost of that bond would be?
No, sir, not off the top of my head. In dealing with letters of credit, which obviously aren't a bond, it's typically a percentage of the amount you're asking for.
Yes, it's about a one percent.
We don't, we don't deal with a lot of bonds. And, and to be truthful, sir, since 2004, we've only done eighteen move-in structures, and we've done zero since 2007. So this is not a high-ticket item.
I understand. But there are, there will always, if, if there's an ordinance there or a code there, at some point, you're gonna have to, it's gonna have to be applied.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's the reason for my answer, my, my question.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you, and you have the choice of, I guess, Option One or Option Three, which would be a combination of one and two, and I'll entertain a motion. You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Arletta?
If GDOT is requiring permits, the bonds requirement?
Yes, sir.
And, and now, if we, if we were to take Option Three, are we duplicating what they're already putting in place, or are we just enhancing what they're doing, or what's?
What we are doing is adding it to our requirement that they produce that GDOT permit.
That they've already purchased for GDOT?
Yes, sir, that they have a GDOT permit.
So they're required to have it anyways, and all we're doing is asking for proof that they've already done it?
That is correct, yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is the county going to be a beneficiary under that particular GDOT permit policy? Because if they have insurance through GDOT, GDOT is the insur, the beneficiary of that, how is the county going to benefit?
The additional, the four other additional amounts that we collect, there's an addition, for Henry County, there's also a personal injury and a property damage bond that we collect on Henry County's side as well.
Okay, so we'll have that, and the general.
We'll have both of them, yes, ma'am.
Would we be named an additional insured under that, or how would we be named?
For the, for the four bonds that we collect for Henry County, the GDOT bonds will be strictly through GDOT. All we're asking for is proof that they have the permit, that they have satisfied GDOT's requirements to be an oversized carrier.
But to the question that was asked, and we aren't really wanting to participate in that bond, we just want to know that they have it.
That they have it, yes, sir, in the event something goes wrong. Because they'll be dealing with, there's the possibility that they'll be dealing with counties other than Henry. Some of these structures could come from outside of Henry County.
How does GDOT know that these people are getting these bonds? Are we doing the work for GDOT now to find out that these bonds were never purchased?
Well, in order to be an oversized carrier, they would have to, as part of our application process, you have to list yourselves as an oversized carrier, and then we would ask for the GDOT permits. If they don't have it in place, then they'd have to go to GDOT. So to some degree, yes, sir, we may be doing a little bit of the policing for GDOT. But most of the people we deal with, most of these house movers, they understand what's required of them. There's not many left.
Mr. Holder?
Correct me, explain something, Bert. In Option Three, we would be adopting the GDOT permit requirement?
Yes.
This would be the one-point-two million?
Yes.
All right, but then in addition, we'd be adopting the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or whatever of county? So that's the portion that I'm referring to, of the cost. Now, are you saying, based on Mr. Arletta, we're just gonna wait for the GDOT requirement?
Yes, sir, if you, if you turn to Exhibit A, the, the second page of Exhibit A, under the heading Required of the Moving Company, you'll see the, the additional bonds right there. This, what you're looking at, Exhibit A is actually the modified fee schedule for the Building Department, and what we're asking for is a copy of the GDOT permit granting permission to transport overweight and oversized loads.
Understand, but in, in addition to the GDOT permit, are you asking for a bond to cover the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of county?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, so that's my point. So there's really, there's really two, there's one-point-two million for the GDOT, then the county's requirement also?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, sir.
So it's not just a GDOT permit, if you went with Option Three?
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bowman?
I guess the more I look at it, the more confused I get. Bert, the GDOTs, I'm gonna go, they have realized that all we're doing is making sure that they have it. However, the bodily injury on GDOTs required would, would cover bodily injury wherever the structure is being moved to, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the property damage, we've got a twenty-five-thousand-dollar property damage, but the property damage required by GDOT is a million dollars, so, and that would cover any property damage, whether it's Butts, Ballin', or Henry, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Right. Right. And I know I'm the one that probably brought some of this up, because at the first, we didn't know what GDOT required, and at first, we were only using like a $10,000 plus or minus, and, but it appears that we're doing a double insurance, basically, from the bond? Is that, am I looking at that correct? I mean, it appears that, okay, it's covered by a $200,000 bodily injury from GDOT. So it don't matter who gets hurt, it's $200,000, and I'm assuming it's per occurrence? It's not just 200 total?
That's right.
Okay, so if GDOT, if they have that required by GDOT, then our personal injury at $300,000, where, whose policies gonna pay first?
The answer to that, I'm not sure. Have y'all seen the GDOT commercial insurance policy? Does it only cover incidents occurring on interstate, on GDOT state routes, or does it cover?
Any routes?
Point A to point B?
Right.
My thought, here's the thing, and I know that I brought the question up when it first came to us, but at that time, I had no knowledge of the $1 million personal property by GDOT or nor the 200,000 in bodily injury. Now, the performance and the payment and the zoning compliance does make sense, but to, at this point in time, it's kind of like a double dip. I think we might need to talk about this a little bit more, Madam Chair, before we get into it, because now, what we're creating is, we're gonna have that person having to pay for something he's already paid for at the GDOT level, that should in fact be per occurrence and should cover the same thing that we're asking is $300,000 to cover.
Would you like to make a motion to table this item?
Yes, ma'am, I think I would like to make a motion that we table the item until we've had an opportunity. Bert, I appreciate what you've done, really, because at the beginning, the only thing I seen was the 10 and the 10, and I didn't, you know, because I questioned, hey, what's the man that gets hurt? You know, 10, 20, $30,000 is not gonna cover him. But now that I know that GDOT has that provision, I think we need to table it and have some opportunity to research that a little bit better, make sure that it's per occurrence, and make sure of the coverage is who is considered under that coverage. I hate to do it to you, but on the same token, I think it would behoove us to go ahead and table it until we've had an opportunity to look at it further.
Mr. Holder?
I'll second that motion for discussion, and the discussion part would be, I'd like a couple of questions answered, Bert. And that is, number one, what is basically the cost of this additional bond that the county is asking for? And number two, in the GDOT permit, insurance requirements, property damage, define whether it's personal, could be public property, is it restricted strictly to a state route or an interstate route? And anything you can find out, because many times, you would think that GDOT's permit would be from the time they set the structure down, the requirements would be, but once it leaves a state route, they may say, that's none of our concern, and it's up to the county. And you, you know, obviously, if there's property, especially public property damage, such as mailboxes, poles, pasture fences, or whatever, it's going to occur on a county route because of the, getting to the location where it would be set down. And they may say, oh, absolutely not, that we're not required because GDOT's permit doesn't require it. So I'm not saying we don't need this, but investigate that if you would.
Yes, sir, and?
Well, yeah, and one other thing, I think maybe our county attorney should review the insurance, the insurance requirements and those policies by GDOT, to be sure that we do have that, as opposed to just, you know, as opposed to not doing it. I think it would make a lot of sense to do that.
Before I walk the floor, is there any other? Mr. Alata?
If this unit is being moved from out of state, not only would it require GDOT permit to move through the state, it also would require federal bonding, insurance, and so on, which the requirements are much higher than the, well, not much, but bodily injury would be a million dollars that that carrier would be required to have also. So there's possibly even more money then out there than just what's being specified here by GDOT.
Mr. Seame?
Terry, let me ask you a question. On a county route, not a state route, the $25,000 damage, if these, the most probably common damage, the common damage that these structures do is probably to wires or hanging structures around telephone poles, but if you were to pull down a red light at an intersection, is $25,000 gonna be adequate to replace that red light?
If they don't break a pole, it probably would. Yeah, they would have to do a lot of damage to go over 25,000. 25,000 should repair it if they just knock down a head or knock down a span. You know, if they pull down all four poles, you know, if the whole thing disappears, if all the signal heads and all the approaches and all four poles, that would probably go over 25, that'd probably be closer to 50 to 60,000, I'd guess.
But the insurance requirement of property damage for a million dollars for GDOT is not specific or exclusive of the county's ability to go against it for the 25,000 we're asking for another bond on. That million dollars that's available to the county doesn't need another $25,000 to protect the county, the million dollars is there as well for the county to go against or whoever's been injured or for bodily injury or whatever. I'm sort of not understanding the need at all for property damage for 25,000 when there's a million dollars ready in place that's available to the public to use.
Well, there's certainly some questions we need to have answered before this item comes back before us, though we do have a motion on the floor to table by Mr. Bowman and a second by Mr. Holder, and we won't set a specific time to bring that back. But any other questions that the commissioners may have, if you'll get with Bert and let him know, we'll make sure we research this thoroughly before we bring it back before the board. So with that being said, there is a motion on the floor to table, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Were you satisfied with the accessory structures and the RV? Any other questions?
Of course, we did have some questions for that, and if anyone else has any questions or concerns about the other proposed topics that are listed on your executive summary, if you would, get with Bert and share those with him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, we have a resolution awarding a bid for recyclable materials collected at the Henry County Recycling Facilities. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, handout number one. And Terry, let me preface that by saying congratulations. The recycling center has now been added to your plate of responsibilities, and we're confident that you will certainly do a phenomenal job with that, just like you do with everything else that falls under your supervision.
Thank you, Chairman, we'll do our best, I assure you. Good morning, Board members. This morning, I want to present to you a resolution that will allow us to sell the materials that we will be taking at the recycle center.
We have a RV and a handout. For that, we don't have any handouts for this item. I know you've reviewed it with all of us, but I think it would be good if we could view those. You can go ahead with your presentation.
The materials that we'll be collecting, we would like, of course, to sell those to people who will be using those products in the reproduction of different goods. So we have done that, we sent that out as proposals, and we had six vendors submit back, and we will recommend award to, for scrap metal, aluminum cans and batteries, to Percol. Let me pull it down just a little bit. Again, for Percol, we'll recommend that we award scrap metal, aluminum cans and batteries. For our plastics, the number one, number two, and then three through seven, office paper and newspaper, which includes, of course, newspaper magazines and phone books, we would like to award to SP Recycling. On both of these vendors, well, back up to Percol, I'm sorry, under Percol, they will furnish the container, and they will haul the materials to their site. So in those cases, it was more beneficial for us to allow them to furnish the container, and then they will haul it, like Percol will pay us eight cent per pound for the scrap metal. On the aluminum cans, he'll pay us 40 cent a pound, that's here, and then on the batteries, he'll pay us 350. So going to plastics, SP Recycling bid, I believe, 280 dollars per ton for the number one, 210 dollars per ton for the number two, and 35 dollars a ton for the grade three through seven. On those, however, we will be furnishing the container and hauling to their site. So we recommend them for that. On the paper products, on office paper, they will furnish the container, and they're in here. They will furnish the container and haul to their site and pay us 160 dollars per ton for office paper, and 70 dollars per ton for newspaper, magazines and phone books. Again, they'll be furnished in the container. The next vendor that we would like to recommend is Sunoco, and they were the best on our cardboard, and they're here. They'll be paying us 144 dollars a ton for cardboard. We have to furnish the container and haul to their site. And then the last vendor is SMB Roll-Off. They were the only source that would, that proposed on the glass, and they're here. And that's these three here. SMB proposed to, on clear glass, to furnish the container and haul at 12 dollars a ton. Amber, they would furnish the container and haul for 10 dollars a ton, and on the green glass, they would furnish the container and haul for 2 dollars a ton. In addition to that, SMB proposed on our yard waste, we recommended them for our yard They would charge us, this is the only one that we pay, we have to pay them, 9 dollars per cubic yard for yard waste. They will furnish a container and, of course, haul it, and, so depending on the size container, you know, if it's a 20-yard container, then it'll be 180 dollars a container that they will charge us to remove from the site and then haul, and of course, that material will be recycled and used as various plants for fuel. In addition to that, we would like to recommend, and this would probably require a little bit of an explanation, on the vendors where we will furnish the container and haul to their site, we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to provide that service, but in the event some extraordinary measure happened where our truck maybe was involved in an accident or something happened, or whatever, for whatever reason, we were unable to haul on the materials that we would collect and haul, we would like to award to SMB as well the plastics, the number one and number two. In the event something happens, I don't do that if we award to them as well, they would furnish the container and haul the materials, and we wouldn't have to stop taking the collection of those materials. In addition, we would like to do that as cardboard as well, that's the other one that we'll be using, furnishing the container and haul. So that'll give me a backup on those. All the other materials, the vendors are furnishing the containers and hauling them, so all the responsibilities for us, we'd like to use them, if you will, as a backup. So in addition, we would like to award SMB on plastics one and two and cardboard. I think this morning, we are pouring additional concrete for, to get some pads ready, and if the board passes this, we'll be calling those vendors and getting them to put their containers out there today. I've notified all of these ahead of time, in the event the board does pass this and made them aware, we will need those out there today, so we can obviously start receiving those recyclables. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know you don't, if you had these spreadsheets, I think it'd make a little more sense, but be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have just a couple of questions. The companies that you're recommending, have you checked with any other government agencies that utilize their services to see what type of service they provide, if they are propped and picking up, and have they had any issues with them at all?
I have, I have talked to Spalding County and City of Griffin on several of these vendors. Matter of fact, I've visited some of one of these vendors' sites and how they, you know, how they perform, so. I have not, the only one I haven't really had much association with is Percol. The one that would be doing the scrap metal and aluminum cans and batteries. The others, I've had, you know, a lot of conversation with them and have met with them and discussed these items with them, and feel pretty comfortable on the rest of them.
And I also noticed on here on your list, motor oil and antifreeze. There's no bid on that, does that mean you will not be accepting those at the recycle center at this time?
Actually, on motor oil, nobody in a formal proposal on it, however, our existing Fleet Services is selling their motor oil, so if it is not a problem with that, we'll extend that same vendor, the option of using the motor oil, of selling the motor oil from the collection site. So we are currently recycling our motor oil from Fleet, we'll just add this to that as well.
And I'm assuming you will charge a fee to accept that from the citizens, or will you accept that free of charge?
We'll be accepting that free of charge. All of these materials that we are accepting will be no charge to the public.
And that includes yard waste as well?
Currently, that is the plan.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Alata?
Terry, the mixed paper, you're not awarding a bid on that?
No, sir, that was kind of an option. We could separate those two, the office paper and newspaper. If you don't separate them, then you could sell it as newspaper. So I elected to go with the option of where we separate them, and hopefully, we'll get more by doing that. As you see, the office paper pays a lot more than the mixed paper, and then the magazine, newspaper pays a little less. I think in the long run, if we separate them, we'll gain more, we'll make more money off of it doing it that way. So that's why we would, that's why we separate.
And you'll have somebody there to ensure, because if it does get mixed, we're gonna end up having to take it apart afterwards and cost money to try to save some money or make some money?
The intent on how we're gonna run this is with part-time employees, but there will be a recycle attendant there all the hours that the center is open. The center will open at 8 o'clock, Monday through Friday, and will remain open to 7 as the initial hours we're gonna try to operate, and on Saturday from 8 to 2. Anytime that that center is open, there will be an attendant. The attendant's responsibility is to, of course, meet these citizens as they come in and help them find the containers and- and help them find the containers and properly separate their recyclables, office paper, magazine phone books, the plastics going to be a little more complicated, the number ones, twos and three through sevens, so there'll be three different containers for plastics, there'll be three different containers for glass. Glass is a little easier, when you say clear, brown and green, that's, that's pretty obvious. But in addition to the recycle attendant, that will be a Henry County employee, we, we're going to use the early release folks as well, or community service, I'm sorry, the community service folks. And we think that if we do that, that we'll have enough people out there to ensure that these materials are placed in the proper bins. In addition, we've made some signs that we'll be placing in front of each container, and it'll have exactly what can go in that container. On plastics, if it's a number one, it'll say drink bottles, water bottles, Coke bottles, those kind of things. In addition, I was thinking about actually placing some of those and attaching them to the signs with a little hook so people know exactly what goes in each container.
Yeah, okay. The only other question I had is, now, you do have four containers at the present time, is what I understand.
Yes, sir, we have four, we actually have five, we have four that we recently purchased, an additional 40-yard container that I'll be using for cardboard.
So what you're recommending here is only requires four, so you're okay as far as capital?
I would like to, I would like to buy an additional 40-yard container for the cardboard so I can pick up one and leave one. So I will be, I'm currently looking around for a used container. These containers run, used wise, probably 1,500, 2,000 dollars in that, in that range. So under this scenario, I would like to buy one more container.
Again, we're, we're using our containers, we are actually going to then deliver this to the vendor company. How far is S&amp;P and Sunoco from present site?
I think they're in Forest Park.
And does our insurance, do we have to get additional insurance to cover them, or is this covered under our existing insurance?
It's covered, that truck will be covered, our truck and personnel will be covered under our existing insurance policy.
With no additional cost by taking this on? The insurance is going to allow us to add this additional service or whatever with no additional cost to the policy?
Yes, there is a $6 policy limit per occurrence on our insurance.
Okay, but sometimes when you start adding more transportation movements, the insurance company gets a little lancy and wants to see an additional premium because their risk and exposure is increased, and as a result, they want a greater premium to cover them, so that's not going to be the case?
I don't know that, Commissioner, that will be a good thing for Mr. Wellman to look into and find that out and report back to you, so I'll ask him to do that.
Because if we're ending up with a lot of insurance for these short movements, the difference between what we're going to get by moving it versus what we can get without taking that risk on and that additional cost, not only the insurance, but actually the vehicles and everything else, may turn out to be cheaper to take the lesser figure and let them come and get it.
Which is one other thing too I need to mention, this proposal was based on six months, simply because we hope to, over the next six months, keep some real good records on the amount of materials that we collect, amount of money that we, the amount of money we collect, the amount of materials we collect, and then weigh those options out, you know, is it better for us to truck it, is it better to let them, you know, place the containers and them truck it, all of those things. So we, we fully expect to keep some real good records on this, come back in six months and make some, you know, some recommendations based on numbers we actually receive. We know on some of these materials, we would do a lot better if we bailed, like cardboard. If you, for instance, on a container cardboard, you're likely to get about two tons of cardboard, whereas if you bail cardboard, you can get about 1,100 pounds per bail. So you could put probably 20 tons on a flatbed there, and then your haul becomes really cheap based on that. So these volumes will enable us to come back and see if we could be more efficient by bailing the cardboard and, and plastics, and at that time, we'll have the numbers to say, here's our volumes, here's the cost of those, that equipment, and this is where it makes sense or not to purchase that. So this is six months, look and see and go from there.
Last question, I'm sorry, the batteries, doesn't indicate whether we're supplying or they're supplying a container, is there a container involved in the collection of the batteries?
It's actually a pallet, and they'll, they want us to stack the batteries up, and we have three pallets full, they'll come collect them.
And there's no concern for EPA or anything else?
We will have to cover those, keep rainwater off of them, and until I can get a cover over there, I'm going to just bring them over to where we're currently storing our batteries at our fleet.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Madam Chair, just to add to Terry's comments, looking at the history of the recycling center, and we certainly appreciate what Peach State has done in the past, but we've had a very loose contract with Peach State over the years. It's really only been the last year that we have really gotten into the efforts that were taking place over there. And just as an example, Terry mentioned the bid from Percol on the scrap metal at eight cents. Doesn't sound like a lot. Well, we had never been reimbursed the six cents that, that we were supposed to have gotten until the last year. Eight to six, it's a 33% increase on a large item, and I think it's important that, that the six-month timeframe, it's important for the public to understand that, that we are new at this. I think that we will transition very well into providing the service, I think the public will see a lot of improvements over there over time. We do ask their, their patience as we get started working with our new employees, but we feel like definitely over time, especially in the, the six months, we will, we'll learn an awful lot. And I think we've already made some, some improvements, and there will be many more on the way. But just like Commissioner Oletta mentioned about, about insurance, we know the coverage is there, it automatically goes on, but in six months, there'll be a new premium out. We'll know exactly what our additional cost is there. So I, I just ask the public, work with us, we certainly are looking forward to working with them, and I think we'll provide a better, more efficient service than what they've gotten in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Mr. Stamey?
Terry, one last thing, I noticed that we're no longer taking household garbage over there anymore?
That's correct, good question, sir. We're not going to be taking any household garbage or no tires. No tires.
Do we have any option in the future, because I've got a couple of emails from people saying, what do I do now? They're going to have to hire an outside vendor to, to service them, correct?
Well, there's, you know, there's haulers in the county now that they could certainly contact for their household garbage. We'll also be supplying, there's a company in Jackson, you know, people want to haul their tires to those. Might add that, just in case people don't know, in the past, both of those services were being charged for at the recycle center, if they brought garbage, there was a charge there. If they brought tires, they were charged to receive those tires. We're not charging for collection of any of the materials that were listed, so, and that's not really, I mean, garbage is not recyclable, I mean, it goes to a landfill. And this is a recycle center, and the intent of this is to recycle these products. So that's kind of the reasoning behind why we're not taking the garbage, the tires are very, very expensive to do. So, but we, we will give people when they come, names and places and locations of where they can take those materials.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have before your resolution awarding a split bid for recyclable materials, and those three companies are SP Recycling Corporation, Sunoco Recycling and S&amp;B Roll Off, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, has anyone signed up? County manager, any comments?
No, ma'am.
Just county attorney?
No, ma'am.
The upcoming meetings and events, all county offices will be closed January 17th in observance of the MLK holiday. Tuesday, January 18th at 6:30 p.m., we have a regular board meeting. Monday, January 31st at 9 a.m., we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, February 1st at 9 a.m., a regular meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel matters and land acquisition.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bowman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. If this, at this time, if there's no further business come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0, we stand adjourned.